We're live, Joe.
It is live stream.
We're live on YouTube.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Uh, good morning, everyone. Thank you all for taking time out of your busy days to get here. I'd like to call the December 9 meeting of the County Planning Commission to order. We do have a forum. First item on the agenda, public comment. On agenda items only. Joe and Richard will get to those projects in a minute. Hearing none, let's move on. We're gonna change up our agenda. Uh, Joe and Richard, you have a project you're interested in at Glenburn Township?
West Abington.
West Abington, thank you. And we had a review on that. Mary Liz, Steve, you guys did the review?
Yes.
What page is that on?
Thirty-two. Thirty-one and thirty-two.
And teal land development. Everybody have that?
Yep.
Yep.
Could you guys hear me, by the way? I'm calling in by calling Harry, sir.
Yep.
Having trouble.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Um, Joe, would you like to present this project?
Yeah, uh, thanks, everybody, for allowing me, uh, a couple of minutes just to, uh, uh, make a couple of points in support of, uh, Mr. Gentile's application. Uh, I, uh, understand how the, uh, planning commission, uh, does business and how they, uh, uh, consider applications in a very professional manner. In fact, I was the solicitor for twenty years, from nineteen eighty-three to two thousand and three. And so, uh, it's a good opportunity. I'm happy to be a, be before, before the commission in another capacity now. Uh, Mr. Gentile, he owns property approximately eighty-five acres of West Abington Township. And, uh, uh, there's a single-family residence out there, and he would like to put another family residence on there for a family member. As I see the legal issues, I'm here to address the legal issues, uh, uh, the, uh, the question is, uh, whether or not, uh, that's, uh, permitted, uh, land development. And I would say two things. Uh, first thing is, uh, uh, we understand that there is a provision in the zoning ordinance that says one, uh, one residence per lot. Uh, however, uh, and we acknowledge that fact, it's there and we have to deal with it. And I, I would make two, two provisions. First of all, I think what we have here is we have the definition of a subdivision under the municipal planning code, uh, allows the subdivision can be two or more residential units on a lot. So, uh, 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 that provision conflicts with the, uh, ordinance of the, the, the city, the township ordinance provision that says one. And I think that as a legal matter, state law would, uh, control over, over the local law on a preemption issue. The second thing is, the, uh, uh, land subdivision and land development ordinance of the township has the same definition of subdivision that the, uh, state law has. Two or more residential units on a lot, a lot, L-O-T. Uh, and that therefore what you have here is you have an ambiguity or a conflict between two provisions of the local ordinances. The SALDO ordinance and the zoning ordinance. And when you have that, I think it's generally recognized principle of land use law that when you have a conflict in an ordinance, uh, and these are things that happen, uh, 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 nobody, nobody's ever prepared perfect ordinances, and there are times when there are ambiguities and conflicts. But when you have those such a things, I think what the, the law says is that you have to resolve those in favor of the owner. Uh, and the owner, the owner who has purchased the property and invested in the property and has a right to use it as he sees fit, as long as it's in a legal manner. So there are the two legal reasons. I think that the provision of the, uh, of the provision allowing two or more residential, uh, uh, prop, residential homes on a single lot are applying. Now here, sometimes this can be an issue where you don't have the setbacks and, uh, uh, other things like that. But here, it's an eighty-five acre property. There's no problems with anything else. We submitted our application that shows that, uh, all other requirements, uh, of the, uh, environmental and zoning ordinances and land development ordinances, uh, are met. So it really comes down to that legal point. And, uh, uh, again, just to reiterate it, we think that state law supersedes the provision in the zoning ordinance and therefore should apply. We also think the provision in the planning ordinance should apply over the zoning ordinance because when there is an ambiguity in a set of ordinances, the, uh, uh, they're resolved in favor of the landowner and his right to use his own property. So I'd really appreciate the opportunity, uh, to make those legal points, uh, and, uh, uh, thank you very much for hearing from me.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Mary Liz, uh, you did the review on that. You present your, uh, which place?
Okay, um. He, Joe is, this is the argument that, that has been, uh, presented in the cover letter as well. However, the land development definition in the MPC and the SALDO i- is defining what a land development is. So if someone puts a second dwelling on a lot, it has to go through land development process. It doesn't give the person the right to do that if the local zoning restricts just to one principal structure per lot. And there are several ordinances in the county that restrict that to just one principle. I think Lakely Borough is one. I know Chet's on our, Chet's on our call. Um, so yeah, there are a lot of towns in the rural areas that do allow you to put more than one dwelling. Um, and it states that in their zoning. However, West Abington specifically states one principal dwelling and not more than two accessories. So at this point, there's already one dwelling and at least two or three accessory structures. There's another structure that I don't even know what it is because it just says building. Uh, Mary Liz, my review on the zoning ordinance, which, which is the, in, which is the law that takes precedence, the MPC and the SALDO, if that's just the definition that's saying if you're putting another structure, basically, um, it is a land development and would have to go through that process.
Yeah. Mary Liz, since you mentioned Lakely Borough, could, could everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Since you mentioned Lakely Borough, I did look up and, and there is a conflict in, uh, between our zoning and our SALDO, and both of them say they take precedent. Um, but again, that's Lakely Borough. I, there were a couple of questions that I did have on the reviews, and this was one of them that did catch my eye. And, uh, I thought the municipal planning code would take precedent over, over the local.
That's just a definition. It's not the law. It's a definition in the MPC that states two or more structures on a lot are considered a land development. It doesn't mean every municipality in the state of Pennsylvania has to allow for two, two or more structures on a property. So I don't know, Steve or, you know, Harry, you and Cindy, you guys have been in planning for years, if you, if what your thoughts are.
Mary Liz, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Have you had follow-up communication with West Abington?
Yes, I spoke to the township secretary yesterday.
And where do they stand on this matter?
Um, she told me that the planning commission recommended that it not be accepted based on the same comments that we had and that the supervisors actually tabled it until we, until they got our comments. We're talking about eighty-five acres? Correct.
Steven, your comments on it?
Yeah, um, first of all, I will say that neither Mary Liz or I are attorneys. However, in our understanding of state laws and doing this for forty-some years, when there's a conflict between the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, zoning takes precedence. There are court cases to that effect. However, the MPC Act two forty-seven is enabling legislation to allow municipalities to undertake comprehensive planning, zoning, and subdivision land development ordinances. They do not zone or subdivide or put out regulations for a municipality. It allows the municipality to set their own laws. And in this case, West Abington has specifically stated within their zoning ordinance, they will only allow one unit, one principal unit on a property. Now, there are two, uh, things that were just mentioned. First of all, uh, if there is a conflict and the applicant wants to do a curative amendment to amend the zoning ordinance, they can do that. The second thing is, they can do a subdivision of the property to put the second lot on. They could also go for a variance. However, there are five specific criteria for variances. They all relate to the physical struct, the physical property. And you would have to show that there's a hardship being created by the ordinance that doesn't allow you to develop the way you want to develop. In this case, with eighty-some plus acres, it'd be very tough to prove a hardship.
Um, any of the commission members have any questions for Mary Liz or for Joe O'Brien or Steven? None? Uh. Is it Mr. Sharing? You're, you're, you're sharing, you're with the, you're one of the supervisors?
Yes, I'm a supervisor for thirty years.
Wow, okay.
I'm, I'm done after this month, but I get my, get my sentence and getting paroled.
Okay. Richard, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I just like the comment that it has been our practice and we have, we actually, his, Mr. Gentile's brother-in-law is building a house down the road. And he has, he has a number of acres, I don't know, fifty, sixty-five acres, I don't know what it is. But he has a house on that property. He has, what we have usually done, if they add a house on a property, they give us an affidavit that they will tear the house down when the house is built. Okay, and he has given us that, and that's, that's one of the things we've done. Um, and everybody else in the township, and they have large properties. In fact, my house is on a large property that had to be subdivided off our family farm. It's been in the family since the seventeen hundreds. For, and my brothers and my sister, they had to all be subdivided off the property. They couldn't be built on the property. And the problem is, if you give it to one person, that opens up a can of that, in litigation, okay, why did you make me tear down my house, subdivide my property when he can do what he's doing with his? And it, it really doesn't matter if it's eighty-five acres or eight acres, it's, it's still the same, same thing. He has adequate road frontage to, to subdivide. And, and he's got the acreage and he's got perk, he can do a perk test all over the place. So it's not really a, a problem. He just doesn't want to subdivide. He doesn't want to go, go by the rules like all of us have to do. I guess that's it. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Richard. Um, uh, Joe, O'Brien, do you have any other comments you'd like to end?
No, I appreciate the attention everybody's given this. And the thought you've all given to it. We think our position is correct, but, uh, 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 we'd ask you, ask you to consider it.
Thanks, Joe. Um, I'm gonna ask the commission members to consider this, uh, uh, one particular project right now, uh, rather than waiting until later on, when we usually do our development reviews. Um, anybody, any of the commission members have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, review as, uh, indicated in our packet.
Harry, before we vote.
This particular request?
Harry, before we vote. Um, KBA worked on this plan and, uh, we have a member of the board who works for KBA, so, uh, are you gonna recuse yourself from the vote?
I, Steve, I didn't mention anything because I, I don't think we in particular did. I think Gary did himself, but I certainly will recuse.
Thank you.
Very good.
Is there a motion? Any motion at all on this particular project? Otherwise, we'll be taking it up at the end of our meeting. With our normal.
Harry, I just have a comment. It's not so much emotion.
Go ahead, Joe. Yeah.
I have, and, and again, as I review these, I just want to make sure everyone understands. Uh, a lot of these I have questions of, and it's from my perspective being on the planning commission and have been on a planning commission for twenty-five years. So it's not anything a- against the review, it's more of a question and answer. I tried to pull the South Abington or the West Abington ordinances on both of these, and I wasn't able to find them online. So it's difficult to make. I, I, I don't know. I could not find West Abington online.
They're not online, no.
Okay, so it, it's hard for me to, to, to make a motion based on not reviewing West Abington. And again, as I look at our ordinance, I see a conflict where our zoning takes precedent in, in conflicts and our, and our land division. Sub, SALDO takes precedent in conflict. So it's difficult for me to, to make the comment based on what I see, um. You know, again, a- and I understand, Liz, I understand your definition of the MPC saying it's only the definition. So it doesn't take precedent, but, um, um, I can't, I can't recommend or not recommend this.
Okay. Very good. Um, anyone else? Right now, hearing none right now, I'll move on then. We'll have to take this up that, uh, under, uh, new business when we get there. Oh, sorry, I don't have an answer for you yet.
Okay, no problem. Thanks for considering.
Very good. We will get back to you. Let's move on. Um. Move all of our minutes from our previous meeting. Everybody had a chance to review those?
I moved to approve.
Moved or seconded?
I seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approved. Uh, our bills were included with our packet. Is there a motion to approve our bills that submitted?
I'll make the motion, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
I'll second the motion.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Our bills are approved. Communications, Steven, would you highlight our communications, please?
Uh, again, the majority of the communications were on grants, uh, letters of support. And there were two, um, correspondence from the, um, environmental coordinator for the department on two projects, one in Jessup and one in Scott Township, uh, with findings of no significant impact. Um, we signed off on the Fonzie's. Um, if there's any questions, uh, as I said, the, the other, the strange one there, uh, which is a two-team model grant from, uh, Mayor Chelick of Mayfield is one that I have never seen before. But the, uh, the remainder are multi-modals from, uh, PennDOT.
The, uh, anybody have any questions? The one for Dixon City, is that the one I just saw in the paper that was approved?
There are a number of them in Dixon. This one has not been approved. They had a couple for their Main Street projects already. Uh, one of them is going out to bid. This actually is called the Main Avenue, uh, Streetscape Project. But it's, the majority of the work is going to be on Boulevard Avenue, uh, basically from uh, Enterprise Drive that goes into their industrial park and their, um,
Mm-hmm.
uh, municipal park up to Main Avenue.
Yeah. Anybody have any comments, questions on the communications? Uh, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Communications are approved. Old Business?
Uh, Whole Business Transportation, uh, we're kind of at a little bit of a lull. We've been working on getting our Unified Planning Work Program, which is our contract with PennDOT up and running. Mary Liz, I've been, uh, showing her how that comes about and what needs to be done with it. We've been working with Luzerne County. Uh, we've got the draft that's been finalized and it's been submitted to, um, Federal Highways for their draft comments. So we're, uh, kind of moving along with that. We also had a request from, uh, Aaron Whitney on the procedures to get Valley View Drive Extension in Jessup and Archibald to the tip. Um, normally, any transportation-related project has to start on the, uh, long-range transportation plan, which, as you know, we just adopted a few months ago. So they're gonna need to go in for an amendment on that. Uh, so I explained the procedure to him and, uh, we got that straightened out.
Do they, um, do they have an estimate on that, Steve?
They have four, uh, excuse me, three alternatives. One is eight million dollars, one is twelve million, and one is twenty-four. The, uh, twenty-four million dollar one is a, a completely new interchange. The twelve million is to, um, put in a second tile. There is an existing underpass under the highway that was put in as a cold haul road when the highway was first built. And then the eight million dollar one is to use that, uh, underpass but use, uh, traffic signals to control the flow underneath it. Um, when the underpass was built, I don't know if it was done purposely or if somebody messed up, but it's only twenty-two feet wide, which doesn't accommodate two lanes of traffic. If it had been an extra two feet wide, we'd have no problem. They could use it right now. Uh, also, um, we completed our HPMS process. Um, our part-time intern who will become full-time in January, uh, Steve Solan and myself went out. We completed the hundred and fourteen segments in about three weeks and, uh, submitted everything to the PennDOT, and so far, we have not heard any rejected. That's it on transportation. Um. Mary Liz? Zappa?
Uh, just still waiting for Scranton and Dunmore. Um, the good news is Scranton did schedule a planning commission meeting, uh, for this, so we are, we're moving slowly.
And where do we stand with Dunmore?
Dunmore has not done anything. Um, the last time we were there, they voted to wait until, to see what Scranton did. So Carol, if you have any updates on that, you could fill us in.
Uh, no updates yet. We're still waiting to see what Scranton does. That's the position of council.
Out of curiosity, you know, of the Zappa communities. Uh, any of them allow two principal buildings on one lot?
Have to look at the ordinances specifically. They don't, I don't have them right in front of me. Um, that is something we could look. They are pretty similar. Um, but I could look and see.
Okay, thanks. Scranton to New York passenger.
Uh, really, there's been no action on the local level. Uh, Larry Mosky from the Rail Authority has been working with Amtrak and New Jersey Transit. Um, as we know, the infrastructure bill was signed by the president a couple of weeks ago. And there are some specific references to expanding the Amtrak system. And there's some anecdotal references to our rail line from, uh, Scranton to New York. So, once, uh, all of that is laid out in, in the legislation, um, hopefully, we can start moving on it again. Uh, we still have some LSA funding that we got a few years ago from both Monroe and Lackawanna Counties, uh, through the LSA program to do any, uh, planning updates that need to be done. So that's still sitting out there, um, when, when everything else is finalized on the federal level. But this is the best it's looked since they ripped up the tracks in the seventies.
Any questions for Steve? Steve, by the way, I feel to be giving your last reports.
I was hoping the last report. I was hoping the last report would be we're getting the train back, but unfortunately, I can't say that.
Oh, Steve, I was hoping for that ten years ago when I left. Okay. Hazard mitigation?
Um, I just submitted the paperwork for Old Forge, um, to FEMA and PIMA. I did hear back from PIMA that they're on board with it, so they're going to notify FEMA. They don't have a problem with, so hopefully, it's just a matter of, uh, time to get an approval from FEMA so Old Forge can, uh, be considered a participant in the plan. And, uh, also, um, we are starting to work on the next five-year update because of the COVID funding that's available. Um, there's, uh, seventy million dollars dedicated to Pennsylvania for hazard mitigation. So, um, they suggested we put the application in now, even though it's five years down the road. It'll be about, uh, you know, it'll take us about a three-year uh, timeframe to do the next update, and we could also do, um, a little bit more in-depth on it with, uh, you know, with different types of, uh, issues to look at. So we are doing that because there is no local match requirement this time. So we're, we're definitely taking advantage of that. And that is due January seventh, so I'm working on that right now.
Any questions on hazard mitigation? Just speak, babe, on watershed program.
Uh, no activity at this point. DEP did approve the plan. Um, there's a number of projects in there, um, that they might want to implement. So we are gonna have a meeting next month with the committee to see, um, what, what they would want to implement at this point.
Any questions, comments on our work programs? If not, let's move on to our development reviews.
Okay, I'll start, um, by giving the board a little bit of an update. Uh, this year, we did a hundred and sixty-nine reviews. Normally, our December is slow, uh, because people are worried with other things. However, we did twenty-four reviews in December. And the amount would have been higher, but in the last week, we had six more come in. So development reviews are really coming in. Uh, I don't know if it's the economy or what the deal is, but we've been busy. And overall, for the year, as I said, we did a hundred and sixty-nine, which is the highest total we've done, uh, going back to two thousand and ten. So it's the highest in eleven years. In two thousand and ten, we did a hundred and seventy-four. And if we had done all of the reviews that have come in, we would have beaten that. So, uh, it's been a busy year. As far as the development reviews, um.
Hey, Steve, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Um, based on the total number of reviews, what, what, uh, how does our current staffing capacity compare to two thousand and ten?
Give me one second, I'll let you know.
I mean, are we comparable? Have we grown? Have we expanded?
In two thousand and ten, we had two and a half planners working on plans. Um, right now, we're basically down to two. So it's less staff.
Thank you.
I don't know, Mayor, if you want to give a, a quick update on what's happening staff-wise?
Um, when Steve, uh, leaves us, unfortunately, on January fourth, I am moving into his position as department manager. So my current position is open, the transportation planner position is open. And, um, we have filled the senior planner position with, um, Bob Kenny. He is our, the summer intern. He's actually still coming in one day a week. Um, he is graduating in January from Bloomberg with, uh, his second degree. His first degree is economics. His second degree is geography and regional planning. Um, he is a, an army veteran. He is, uh, he is a godsend. Let's put it this way, he is very thorough. He understands everything. I just explained it to him once. He gets it. Um, he's been doing actually the majority of these reviews, and we've kind of been signing them until he, um, um, until he comes out full-time in his senior planner position. But, um, I, I'm really happy. He, um, he bikes up here from Hanover Township. Um, he's gonna continue doing that, I guess, unless the weather gets really bad. I don't know what he's gonna do then. Um, but, um, hopefully, he is going to be responsible then for doing all of the subdivision reviews and support letters and things like that moving down the road. So we are looking to fill my position, and there was a young lady that we interviewed in the springtime, um, who we were going to offer this other, the senior planner position to, but she, uh, ended up taking a position with Luzerne County because they act a little bit faster than us. Um, she is, she actually lives in Susquehanna County, and she just moved back here from Maryland. And she was the zoning and planning administrator for Worcester County, Maryland, so she gets it as well. So she is currently, uh, she actually left Luzerne County because she had a family, uh, a family, uh, medical issue that they wouldn't give her, uh, the medical leave because she wasn't there long enough. So she actually had to, uh, leave that position. So we are kind of wooing her to try to get her when she's ready to come back, which will be hopefully after the first of the year. We're trying to get her here into my spot.
Good.
Um, one of the other things that, uh, Bob will be doing, since he is an avid biker.
Yes, yes.
Uh, we're gonna put him in charge of our, uh, pedestrian and bike study to get that implemented around the county.
Makes sense.
Oh, but biking from Hanover means pedal, not motor?
Hanover Township, biking, yep.
Pedaling.
It takes him two hours each way to get here.
Yikes.
And about, uh, what was it, back in August? He actually was hit by a car in Pittston.
Yeah.
On his way here.
Wow. Yep.
Thank you, thank you for the update. Let's continue with our development reviews.
Okay, on page fifteen, uh, Coast Tire and Auto Service. Uh, for anybody that ever ate at Sebastianelli's Restaurant, this is the old Sebastianelli's Restaurant. They're tearing it down and building the Coast Tire. Uh, just a couple of comments on it. We did give a conditional approval, uh, based on the fact that we weren't sure if there was, uh, well, they didn't, there was no mention of an existing highway occupancy permit for the project. And that is a requirement, but also they did mention that they were tying into the PennDOT stormwater system for their stormwater controls, which again requires a permit from the state. Which again, requires a permit from the state. Uh, there were some data items that were missing, uh, surveyor seal, uh, and the N S control plan. Couple of other things that were minor. Uh, in the meantime, I did talk to. One of the engineers on the project and they said they had, again, they're from K B A, they did have uh, contact with PennDOT for the. Uh, highway occupancy permit, both for the driveway and stormwater, and they were working on the other uh, items that weren't part of the project, so. Uh, we did give a conditional approval, but you know, this was just an informational item. On page twenty-five and twenty-six. Sixteen twenty-nine Pittston. This is a proposal, the subdivide, uh, one lot with an existing building. And another lot with another existing building. The applicant requested a variance for off-street parking and the city zoning board approved that. However, there was no variance listed for. Creating a non-conforming lot. Uh, since there are two existing buildings, there really would be nothing that's changed, but they do need a variance. Because the minimum lot size would not be met. Five thousand square feet is the minimum, they're doing two thousand two hundred plus. So just note that uh, we gave a conditional approval because again, we're not sure if the zoning hearing board did approve the variance for lot size. Or if that was just uh, overlooked.
Good, I, Steve, a follow-up on that. I have one question. If there wasn't an existing building on there, would you have given this conditional approval?
No.
Good, okay, that's, you answered my question, thanks.
Yeah, they would have to go to the zoning board, get the variance and then resubmit it to us with the variance.
Great, understood.
We'll skip over thirty-one for now, Gentile, we discussed that, and I'll go to page forty-six. Uh, Davis Street Warehouse Land Development. This is actually a lot consolidation, which we did recommend approval of. And then there is the land development to construct. Uh, leasable spaces, three leasable spaces of one hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred, one eighty, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand. For a total of five hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred. Again, we're giving a conditional approval with the same comments from the subdivision. There was no surveyor seal on the plan, which is required by the PA Professional Engineers Registration Act. They didn't give us the certification for water service, which again, is required by the M P C and the borough ordinances. And the other thing was, at this point, they're proposing leasable spaces. Which makes it difficult to determine the required off-street parking. Uh, and we are a proponent of not creating more impervious surface business necessary. So we're recommending that uh, they could eliminate two pads right now. Um, pads could be graded and uh, grassed over. And if they need it, when they get the number of employees and the uses within there, if they need to, they can go back and repave. Um, they would actually decrease the impervious surface by about ten percent. So that's just a recommendation again uh, for the borough. As I said, we tried to eliminate impervious, or, or, excuse me, uh, pervious surface wherever we can. One of the other options is they could do a pervious surface right now, and if they need to, in the future, pave it. And the only other one was uh, on page thirty-one, Gentile, which we discussed. Unless uh, board has any other questions or Mary Liz wants to bring anything else up.
No, I just want to bring up um, just to make clear for everybody that we, that we're just the, an advisory board. I mean, Harry, you could. That, that the final decision is going to be up to the township on this plan, so. I think everybody's aware of that.
Anybody, uh, anyone have any questions on any of the reviews? Um, Harry, just Tony Grisani, just like, like Steve said on the Gentile one, obviously. The Coast Tire one, I will have to abstain because we are doing that land development. Steve, you'll make a notation on that, Tony, on those two reviews?
Yes.
Can I inject something in?
Yes, Richard?
Richard, yes. They actually on Gentile property, they have one house. And they tried to make the barn into a house, but our zoning officer shot them down. And they have uh, like a, they made that into a cabin. But then I had somebody, our meeting say, is somebody living in that house? Because there's always a vehicle parked and there's lights on every night, so. I have to investigate too. So they actually have one residence and have another structure on that, that property.
Is that when it's labeled as building, that they didn't say what, what, what it was used for?
Yeah, that's why I said.
And there is another barn, there is another barn.
Okay, just so everybody knows, like, what's going on with that property. And can I interject that this is not the first time they've come to us. They came to us years ago after they bought this property. And they wanted to make it a, a maintenance garage truck terminal for Dunmore Oil, Airline Petroleum, R L E. And they were shot down because they would have had over a hundred and twenty-five trucks in and out there, twenty-four hours a day in an R two zone. So it's not the first time they tried to do something with this property.
Let, let, let me comment on that. First of all, the other structure is an accessory structure used for hunting and things like that. It's not a permanent residence. And secondly, I don't know what the relevance is of the fact that prior applications were made for use of this property. Last I heard, people are entitled to use their property. And people are entitled under the constitutional laws of the United States to make application with the local government to use their property. And when the local government turns them down, people, and people are entitled to maybe attempt to make another use of the property. So we, we did apply for a, a terminal, as he said, we submitted the application, it was turned down and we accepted it and moved on. So I think that that's, that's not really relevant to your considerations. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Um, any other questions or comments on the development reviews?
Harry. Based on the discussion and hearing from Richard and Joe. Um, you know, I'm, I'm going to recommend that we carve out the Gentile review from all of the other reviews. Vote on that as a package, and then pending further discussion of the Gentile review, um, we can ask the board to vote. And again, based on what Mary Liz said, we are a review, a reviewing body only. So the final decision will fall back to West Abington. But I, I feel the need to have a further discussion on this matter.
Are you making that a form of the motion, Jose?
Yes.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor of uh, removing the Gentile development? From our uh, uh, new business right now, to act on that.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good, motions approved. Tony? You didn't vote on that, you abstained? Sorry. Just wanted to make sure. Very good, okay. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the balance of the development reviews as prepared by the staff.
I move to approve.
Motion. I'll second the motion. Second. Any question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The development reviews are approved, other than the Gentile. Now, ladies and gentlemen, let's take up the Gentile development. What's your pleasure? Either have a motion to approve it as submitted by staff or. Prove it. Uh, and I, and I've got to say. In all my years, I don't ever remember the board not accepting a staff recommendation.
I, I was just going to say that, you know, and, and. As much as there's a few of us who are, are, or were planners, um. I know I have not, you know, I have not seen the ordinances on, and the development ordinance, the zoning ordinance. Mary Liz and Steve reviewed it. Um, I would agree that um. They seem to be the knowledgeable parties in this review process. And uh, I agree with Harry as far as. What he just said, and I think that we should, you know, go along with their expertise at this point.
Other comment?
Um, my comment on that is a, a lot of questions end up being conditionally approved. And a denial um, seems to be a little harsh in this because, again, there are conflicting verbiage. In all ordinances. So I, I think a denial is, is really not appropriate.
What's your suggestion then, Chad?
Well.
A conditional denial?
A conditional approval based on a hearing seems to follow suit with all of the other questions, especially even in this round. You know, a conditional approval based on those two lots in Scranton, when you're, 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 you're granting a non-conforming lot. That was a conditional approval based on the zone hearing. I believe conditional approval in this is appropriate as, as was that.
And then again, how do you, what?
Can I just chime in for a second? I just want to say, we, we, we don't use the denial a lot, but when we feel it is in a direct violation of. The zoning ordinance, we usually make it a denial. Because conditional approval, you can go back and kind of fix things. In this case, they're, they, they have options that they're going to have to uh, look at. But as presented, it does not, in my opinion, meet the township zoning ordinance.
Right, and I agree with you.
Yeah.
But I, but I also see the same thing for the creating a non-conforming lot in, in Southside. Uh, and again, you know, that, that's basically, that's totally opposed to the ordinance. You're creating a non-conforming lot. It is a hardship because there's an existing structure on there. Uh, but that was given a, a conditional approval based on a zone hearing. And I think you have conflicting verbiage in the ordinances. And I, I would treat this as the same, but that's my opinion.
I agree with you, Chad.
Just to give you a little bit of a background on, when Mary Liz and I review an ordinance, or excuse me, review a development. What we look at with the conditional approvals is, as Mary Liz said, is it something that can be addressed, can be fixed? Is it something that's minor? Uh, for instance, the many times we give a conditional approval if they do not have the surveyor seal on. The map. The reason we give it a conditional approval is it's a requirement of Pennsylvania law that a surveyor seal be on the map. Also, the assessor cannot accept a plan that's not sealed by a surveyor. So that informs the applicant that there are requirements that they must meet. Also, we'll look at conditional approvals, again, if they're missing minor things. A graphic scale or a, a north arrow, something like that, which is listed in the ordinance, but it wasn't shown on the plan. Uh, in the case of the uh, property in Scranton, they did go to the zoning board for a variance on parking. I'm not sure, as I said, whether they went as, also for the variance on lot size. But in this case, it's a de minimis variance because the property is already existing, the structures are already existing. The only change, if anybody would notice, is on paper. So, when I do, do uh, give a project a conditional approval, I look at small things that can be corrected. Or things that might have been overlooked. In this case, we're specifically creating a new structure. A new residence where the township boardman says you cannot do it.
Can I make an additional comment?
Hold on a second, Joe, I just want to go through the commission members first.
Okay. I have a question, um, Mary Liz and Steve, um. I guess it's not really known if this is going to go to the zoning hearing board yet, but have you ever done a conditional approval based on? Um, recommendations from the zoning hearing board and then go back and review it again after that?
Yes, yes. If we get a letter from the municipality that the zoning hearing board has been, you know, that a hearing is scheduled or that they've already ruled on it, yes. Then we go along with what the zoning hearing board, because that's their jurisdiction. It is my understanding in this case that, that it has not gone to the township zoning hearing board, it went to the planning commission. Um, they made the same recommendation that we did, I guess, based on reviewing their ordinance. Um, and then the supervisors tabled it, and uh, Rich, is that actually what happened?
Yeah, I went to the planning commission and we tabled it, yes.
Okay.
There is a workaround for this, this is, all they have to do. Divide, it's not.
But we did, but we did list options in the, in, you know, a- as presented. I, if I was a, a local official, I would vote to deny it. I mean, that's just me. Um, there are options there. You could either subdivide it, or you could request a hearing, or, or. Or discuss this with the township further, but based on what was submitted here, it's in direct violation of the zoning.
No.
Harry?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes, go ahead, Joe.
For the comment?
Yep.
First of all, one, one thing that I left out, uh, when I, when we were talking about that other structure. That, that other accessory structure, we signed and filed with the township, a letter indicated there's not going to be any mailbox of that other structure. So that's not another residence. That, that, that was something that we agreed on, that's, that's in the record in the township and signed by the owner of the property. Uh, so we just want to clear that up, uh, if the township thought that maybe we had, we would have a third residence on the property. It's used for hunting, recreational uses, like a cabin, it's not a residence. And uh, we agreed to that, uh, when it was constructed.
Okay.
And uh, we uh, we didn't go to zoning because we didn't think we had to. We think it's approved. That the city argument we're making before you is basically, we think that uh, under the law, state law precedents over uh, local law. Uh, the, the interests of the landowner take precedence when there's a ambiguity or conflict. We think that uh, that we, that this would be permitted, and that therefore, we don't need a variance from the zoning board. That's why we didn't go to zoning. Went to the planning commission to, to get the permit and uh, that's our position and we ask you, uh, thank you for your consideration.
I wonder, are there any court cases that identify um, a precedence in this case? That anybody knows of?
There's cases on the issue of uh, 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 the interest of, when there's an ambiguity. Uh, there's a basic principle of zoning law, when there's, when there are provisions which appear to be conflicting. That uh, the interpretation has to be in favor of the landowner uh, to use the property, as long as he's using it legally. And here, you know, putting a residence and the residence R two zone is illegally, so, so that, that precedent, I, I don't think there's any precedence. On the other issue.
So I just, I just want to chime in again too, using the definition that state provides for land development. In effect, if this is the case, then there is no municipality in the state of Pennsylvania that can restrict one residence to a property. Because that, that, that's what they're arguing. And, and that's not the case. There are several municipalities that say one dwelling per lot.
Well, I, I wouldn't date with that. Why to brush, in this case, you have, number one, you have the state law, which said that a land development can be more than one residence on a lot. And then you have the local law, which adopted the same thing.
What, what it's saying is the land development, i- if, if you are putting a second structure, it is considered a land development. That's my interpretation. Not that it's an automatic, you have the right to do that everywhere. That's my opinion again, not an attorney.
Yeah, I respect your opinion, but my opinion, I think, is otherwise as I've, as I've seen.
Has this matter been resolved by West Abington, or is this still? You know, it's so confusing. Um, I, I'm not comfortable voting on this matter today.
Well, we do have a time limitation, those, that we do have to deal with, okay, in order to respond to the community, okay? I mean. I think Chad has the one suggestion saying like, well, you know, we can make a conditional approval. I like it, I could see us saying. All right, we have to make a conditional approval, you uh, submit an acceptable subdivision plan. Then you could build your house.
That, that's what we're talking about.
That, yeah, that's fine. I could reword it that way, to say, you know, conditioned upon subdivision or getting a variance. Which I'm not sure is the right option.
Well, no, don't lead them down variance road, Liz, because you stated, they don't, they can't really prove that hardship.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so I mean, I think if we wanted to really approve it conditionally, we say, present an, a. An acceptable, approvable subdivision plan, and we could, we could go along with this. Chad, does that?
You know, that, let me comment on that. Uh, I respect your uh, your view, Harry, and your position, but that's not something we would agree on. We're asking for a letter of approval. Uh, this is an eighty-five acre lot owned in the same family. Same family's going to live on it. We don't think that the, the subdivision plan would be appropriate or necessary here. But we would, we would not agree with that. We, we asked for approval.
And I, and I understand, Joe, and, and I think one of the reasons that. We always say, look, you can't put two principal buildings, residents on the same lot, is because sometime down the road. You're going to have to subdivide that because somebody's going to sell it and it's going to move. Because sometime down the road, you're going to have to subdivide that because somebody's going to sell it and it's going to move on out of the family. And then to, I have another concern, which now.
We'll do it.
Submit a subdivision.
Sometime down the road, we'll do it. That's not a reason for to deny our request now.
No, the reason to deny the request is because in somebody's opinion, our opinion, it's not allowable.
And, and then the road, it'll be a hard, they'll say it's a hardship, now they have to subdivide it. Uh, I've been through this before. That's what they, they do. They say, oh, now it's a hardship, I have to subdivide.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it, it plays, and they, they, I've been through this many times with land, they want to not add it onto their. By property, and they don't want to add it on. I tell them they have to add it on, or they have to subdivide it. Because they, well, it'll never be sold. I said, never is a very long time. There's divorce, there's death. Fighting in a family and it all goes that way.
I, I would prefer to act on this today if we could, Rose. I mean, I, I mean, it's up to the, the board. I, I agree you guys want to do this. Um, but I mean, we, we're just delaying. I think, uh, I, I'm not sure if there is a, an acceptable outcome here. All parties involved.
It came in on November nineteenth, so we have to respond by the nineteenth of December with, to make the thirty days. So.
Unless we could get an extension from the developer or the owner.
No, that, I, I'd like to be accommodating, but, yeah, we, we want to get this approval and get going and build in the spring. And the extension of the time, uh, would do, would set us back on that.
Very good. Thank you, Joe.
And I'll see extension needed. This is a question. I understand it's a, it's a difficult question. And I understand that Liz has made arguments and we've made arguments, but, uh, that's why you're here, to decide difficult questions.
That's correct. And again, this is a recommendation we are making to the township. Okay. Um.
Harry, I'm, I'm comfortable with your suggestion.
Of making this a conditional approval that we, uh, receive an acceptable subdivision plan.
Otherwise, we're approving a precedent, correct?
Yes.
That's correct. Yes.
I, I agree with that. It shouldn't be an approval because there is language in there, even though that language is conflicting. Therefore, conditional is, to me, appropriate.
Do I hear a motion then? I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, grant a conditional approval of the project based on the submission of a, an acceptable subdivision plan. Is that?
So moved.
Second.
To that effect? I'm sorry, was that made by Rose, seconded by?
Chad.
Very good. Any discussion? Um, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 One, two, three, all those opposed? And of course, we have one abstention from Tony. Very good. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, everybody.
Not what you expected, but.
Appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. Thank you for your comments and attending.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, any other business to come before the commission?
Harry, I have.
Steve, when is your last day?
Just, Harry, you know, you have something to say, Harry, right?
Oh, yeah. Well, wait, I'm sorry. Who was on that phone?
Me, it's Cindy. I just want to know when Steve's last day is.
January fourth.
Okay, and just now that, just now that, um, Peter and Wolfers and I were talking and we would like to recognize you at a. Uh, Northeast, PPA Northeast section meeting, but we want to do and we can do it in, in person one, so we're holding off on that now.
Yeah.
Are we invited to the party? Is there a party? Are we invited?
We will invite, we will invite the board of directors to that meeting, yes.
Chad, you just want cocktails. Stop it, we know. Steven?
I, um, I have one question before we adjourn, just one quick question.
No, we're not going anywhere yet. We're not going anywhere.
The, uh, last, at the last meeting, I brought up a, um. The public utility service information block. And, and basically, and, and I agree, no one in the county could ever go and check against the, uh, developer and or the engineer. But I did verify that there was a gas line on that line, on that Lanza Verastro subdivision. So, and this is a question I don't expect to get answered, just a question for everyone there. Does that block libel the county in any way when you check existing utilities at, at site? There's a yes or no. Verastro was checked, no, that was incorrect based on, unfortunately, based on the engineering firm that did, that did the subdivision. So is there any liability on the county without putting some disclaimer in there that you're, you're using the information of, of the developer? Or is that something that's known?
The intent of that was really just for in-house, so we knew what areas were served, but, um. I've never heard anybody challenge anything based on, on whether it was correct or not.
Okay, but that, I guarantee you that the, the, uh, the engineer had, has that incorrect. I, I did pull the, uh. Um. From, from a, uh, realtor website and, and the gas line is, does have front, it does, it does. It exists on the frontage of that property on Mondro Road.
Yeah, you know what, Chad? We could actually go in and modify the form and put in parentheses underneath that that says, you know, for, for information purposes only or for in-house. You know, or whatever that.
I'm leaving that entirely up to you guys. I'm just asking. We're all comfortable with that. It, it's there, but, um. Developers and or engineers do make mistakes and, and I guarantee you this, this was one of them. So that's, you know. Um, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, Chad, when we, uh, review that box there, that's whether or not those utilities that they need to service the site are there.
Right.
It's not whether or not there are other utilities on the property. Uh, because many times there are power lines, uh, easements. And we don't look at that, uh, as a utility per se. We're looking at whether or not. The electric service is there, whether or not the cable service is there, the water service. So that's for the property itself, not if there are other utilities that cross the property. But yes, we, we base our review on what we're given. We don't go out and research, uh, those items. In, in a perfect world with enough staff, we could probably do that. Uh, we would do site visits and everything else, but, uh, Harry, I'll remember going way back when. On major developments, we used to do site visits when we had six planners on staff. So.
Do, do that with a hundred and sixty-nine developments this year?
I, and you know what, I would never, I would never see that even possible today with, you know, with, with the, uh. With the one call setup and asking for information, it never comes back complete. Um, so I would never, never believe that could be done today. Um, so, and I, I'm only saying is, if you're comfortable with that, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. If there's, you feel there's no liability on the county, then that's fine.
Maybe we'll bounce that up more than solicit.
Like, like case in point now, we had a subdivision a couple of months ago in Newton Township, um. And Comcast serves Newton Township, so we checked Comcast down for the cable. The property owner actually said to me, well, there isn't actually cable on this particular road. I said, it didn't really matter. It was just. Because that was the company that served the township, we were listing it. So, and then she understood. So, I mean. If you feel I need to put a disclaimer on there or something, let me know. No one's really questioned it up until the last, um, till Chad and actually.
All right, any other comments? Your last official meeting, buddy?
We'll miss you. For all you do and all you did for this sport.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're really going to miss you, Steve. Are you going to retire completely, or will you be doing consulting work? What will you be doing in your next life?
Well, as of right now, I have no plans. Uh, I did tell Mary Liz and, and everybody in the office, if you need anything, you can call me. It's not a big deal.
Yeah, but you changed your number.
And, um, I've been doing this officially for forty-one years, but I also did. I also did two internships here for a total of six months, so if you want to add those in, it's almost forty-three years.
Wow.
When I retire.
That's weird, Steve. Wonderful.
David, since, since we are doing this as a Zoom, we do have one presentation for you and Mary Liz is, uh, standing behind you there, which you can see.
I'm going to hit him over the head with it.
Liz, would you please read that?
Yep, it says, "In recognition of forty years of dedicated and outstanding service to the citizens of Lackawanna County. In the planning department, this plaque is presented with our heartfelt appreciation to Steve Petoniac. This ninth day of December twenty-twenty-one, and it's signed by Brenda Sacco, our director, and Harry Lindsay, our board chairman."
Uh, thank you very much.
Um, I got to tell you, buddy, you, you've been a leader in transportation for years and years and years. I remember your, you know, you started looking, reflecting back and I, and it's because of you. The KC Highway has no billboards, because you actually went to every one of those communities, asked them to revise their zoning. And make KC Highway a scenic byway. You know?
That's right.
Such a beautiful drive going up through the valley there.
It is.
There's a lot of complaining going on, but.
Yeah, no billboards. That's a good thing.
Beautiful. And that's only one project that I could think of that.
Right.
Except for Dunmore and Mayfield. And we had a little bit of a battle there because they already had plans for billboards, but we limited it just to ones that they had plans for.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean.
Great job all these years.
Yeah.
Hey, Mary Liz, who, who handles public relations for county government? Is it Joe?
Joe Drenzo.
You know, is it possible that you can get a picture of you and Brenda and Harry if you're around, uh, presenting the plaque to Steve and maybe do a write-up? Um, I think this is worthy of some public relations. I think the community needs to know about Steve's years of service and I, you know, I'm happy to help him with it.
Yep, I will talk to Brenda and we'll contact Joe.
Great suggestion, Rose. Great suggestion. Now, Steve, we'll give you your chance.
A- as I said, uh, I'll be available to the staff here, um, and any of the board members that need any assistance. Feel free to call me at any time.
Thank you, Steve. It's been great working with you.
Absolutely. Miss you.
Harry, I don't know who's going to make the coffee now.
Now, we, we do have a guest down here too, Steve Solan. I see he's still logged in here. Uh, Steve Solan, who's worked with Stephen for thirty years also.
Uh, any. Close, close to forty.
Forty?
Yeah, I'll have forty next year.
What do you have to say to your, uh, coworker there?
He's going to be missed, that's for sure. We've had many, many great times together, so he's definitely going to be missed. Good luck, Stevie.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good. You know, if, if you look at our staff, um. Mary Liz, Steve and I have been here for probably a total of like a hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty years. That's unbelievable for a planning commission. People come and go all the time.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, we're, we're.
Congratulations.
And Harry, you, you left the county, but you joined the board. Yep, so you haven't skipped a beat. Right?
Cindy, you going to, uh, let us know when they honor Steve at PPA?
I certainly will, yes.
We, we will be there for sure.
Yep, absolutely.
Unless I'm in Florida, you know, but.
Yeah.
You can only hope.
Yeah. Well, as I said, we want to wait till we can do it, an in-person presentation, so.
That'd be great.
Hopefully by the spring.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Words of wisdom?
Missing you the best, Steve.
You gotta have a great Christmas. Enjoy.
You too.
They've got their presents and. See you all next year.
All right, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
I need a motion to what, adjourn? Thank you, guys. Enjoy.
Okay, take care.
Great holiday, Harry.
Thank you.